Welcome, everybody, to our informal session this afternoon. And today, we have some very important business to get going with. You know, there's no question or doubt that we, as a city, we, as a Commonwealth, we, as a nation, live in some very challenging times. And with significant economic difficulties, you know, throughout our nation, it, you know, once again, it also affects Virginia Beach very much. But that being said, I think we all agree that, as a body, we have a responsibility to ensure that Virginia Beach is, you know, doing the right thing for right people in spite of the challenging times. And it took a lot of hard work and, you know, council coming together with numerous meetings and discussions of all the budgetary items that we have. And during a budget season, not everybody gets 100%. But once again, I think with the spirit of collaboration that we have, we've come together with a plan that, you know, that we will be able to execute and ensure that Virginia Beach, you know, still delivers the quality services that are, you know, public demands. And once again, I want to thank Vice Mayor Wilson for her efforts. But I want to thank everyone for their efforts going forward, that, you know, that hopefully that the spirit of collaboration, you know, will produce a very outcome that we could find very positive. So at this point, Vice Mayor Wilson? At this point, just take your time to go ahead and... Oh, you go right ahead.
So, the reconciliation letter was emailed out to everyone about 1:00. I get the final draft at 12:00, 13:00, and I knew to read through it and write to you about 2:00, about 1:00.
I'd ask to send it to another email address. I guess somebody didn't do that. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just seeing.
But anyway...
We're going to give you time.
We're going to still, like we did last year, is take about a 15-minute break. Let everybody read it in case you didn't get it. I know it wasn't a very big window, but I didn't get it until 2:06. There's a lot of very, very last items put in. But there were two changes, though, from what you got today. They're very minor. Number nine, where it says the audio... Number 16, the African-American Cultural Center, we added the word "Virginia." So this is Virginia AACC. So those are the only two changes of what you got. So, yeah, we'll just take a few minutes and... Yes, Rocky?
Vice Mayor, members of council, before we get started on this reconciliation budget, under the advice of the city attorney, I want to disclose that I'm employed at the sheriff's office, and I have filed a disclosure letter with the clerk.
Okay, thank you. Jen?
I would like to take Councilmember, what's her name? Holcomb's... The District One representative. And disclose that I am employed by Tidewater Community College. So I want to disclose that before getting into the budget.
Okay, thank you. Josh, what are you going to disclose?
He has three kids.
No, those are exemptions, not disclosures.
Since we're on a roll, I would like to disclose that I'm the owner of two businesses located in the town center of Virginia Beach. One of them is Town Center Office Suites LLC, 6th Floor, 1 Columbus Center. And the other one is my solo law practice, Joshua F. Schulman, PC, located at the same location.
Thank you. At this point, oh, yeah, Amelia?
And it's not District One. But for the Virginia African-American Cultural Center, even though it's an organization, and the founder and chairman, I get no compensation in any form for that. It's something for the community.
Okay, thank you. You know, at this point, as a courtesy to everyone and for points of clarity and transparency, I'm going to recommend that we adjourn for 20 minutes and to allow you the opportunity to take and delve into it, you know, hopefully with the thoughts of providing more meaningful conversation. So at this point, we're just going to go into recess for 20 minutes. Thank you, and welcome back. We had the opportunity to walk things over. And Vice Mayor Wilson, if you would facilitate some conversation, please.
So, before we get started, let's read this very long letter out loud. Just want to thank each and every one of you. We've had a lot of conversations. There's been a lot of input from all of you into this process. And thank you for all the time. And I really want to thank the staff. Patrick and Kevin Kirschman, Kathy Warren. And there's a lot of people that they were on standby 24/7 practically to answer our questions and to help. I was on the phone with Kevin last night, 10:30 last night. And Patrick said, "It's okay. It's the budget season." He's kind of really sleepy when I called him last night. But, and he's, he really is a jewel. Kevin is really a jewel. But everybody has just been wonderful to work with and giving up their time so freely. So I'm going to go ahead and start reading this out loud. And it's not so much that y'all can't read, but it's for the public, so it's part of the record. Dear City Council Members, On March 21st, 2023, the City Manager presented the proposed FY 2023-24 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program, CIP. Since that time, through a series of City Council workshops, including briefings from individual departments and capital improvement program section through the workshop meetings, as well as valuable input from the community at public hearings, emails to city leadership, and digital participation through Balancing Act, Speak Up VB, and via social media, recommended changes to the proposed budget are outlined below. Number one, to honor the sacrifice of military families within our community, it is recommended that the real estate tax rate for surviving spouses and military service members who died in the line of duty be reduced to 0.000001, one millionth of one cent per $100 of assessed value. It is estimated this rate reduction will reduce the real estate revenue by $89,040. This reduction in revenue will be fully absorbed by the general fund and will not be shared with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Number two, reduce the Sandbridge Real Estate Tax by 1 Cent, decreasing the FY 2023-24 Real Estate Tax Revenue within the Sandbridge Special Services District, the SSD, fund by $172,973. This reduction in revenue will be offset through an equivalent reduction in the Sandbridge SSD's reserve for contingencies. Due to the healthy performance of lodging tax revenues dedicated to the fund, as well as anticipated federal cost sharing in the amount of $22.2 million for the next phase of sand replenishment, this reduction in real estate tax revenue is not anticipated to negatively impact the sand replenishment cycle or prevent the current practice of having two replenishments fully funded. In FY 2023-24, the total Sandbridge SSD real estate tax rate will be $1 per 100 of assessed value, which compromises the 99-cent citywide base tax rate and the 1 cent of SSD tax rate. Number three, following the financial closeout of FY 2022-23 in August 2023, the City Manager should report to the City Council the actual revenue collections for this professional occupational license, the full tax compared to the budgeted estimates for both FY 2022-23 and FY 23-24. The report should provide options for consideration for amending threshold for business beginning in January 2024. In the event, updated projections would reflect higher than budgeted estimates. If capacity exists, the option should be budgeted neutral and not necessarily estimate a need for a reduction in expenditures. Number four, the City Manager should provide a report to the City Council regarding the real estate surcharge within the Town Center Special Services District, SSD, providing options on amending the existing tax rate within the district to ensure residential and commercial properties are equitably charged for the level of enhanced services they receive through the SSD. It is further recommended by this body that the operating budget be adopted on May 9th, 2020, with the following additions, adjustments, additional adjustments. These adjustments provide needed support to our community partners and enhance the quality of life within the city. Number five, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $20,000 to provide a one-time contribution of Men in Fate, which is I Die For All Basketball Camp. This event will be held at the Virginia Beach Sports Center, and children who attend this camp will be provided with a basketball camp experience and that includes technical skill improvements as well as mentorship. Six, increase general fund nondepartmental contribution of $50,000 to provide a one-time contribution to support the Sunrise Christian Music Festival to be held in Virginia Beach on September 2023 at the 24th Street Stage at the Oceanfront. Number seven is to increase nondepartmental regional grants by $75,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Center for Global Diplomacy for Workforce Development, Training, Exercise, and Wellness Coaching, Senior Citizen Workshops, and Food Packaging and Distribution. Number eight, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $25,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Great Neck Athletic Association, a youth tackle football program. Number nine, to increase nondepartmental regional grants by $75,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Philippine Cultural Center of Virginia to provide funding for audiovisual upgrades and HVACs to their facility. Number 10 is to increase nondepartmental regional grants by $75,000 to provide a one-time contribution to support the Kempsville Pony Baseball, a historic youth baseball organization. Number 11, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $25,000 to provide a one-time contribution to support the Kings Grant Lynn Haven Recreational Association. Number 12, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $150,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Parks and Recreation Foundation for fundraising efforts related to park and playground enhancements with the Bay Colony and Sea-Tac communities. Number 13, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $25,000 to provide a one-time contribution to families of autistic children in Tidewater fact to assist in their capital training to build an autism resource center, a state-of-the-art facility to provide social and recreational programs to benefit autistic individuals and their families. Number 14 is to increase the nondepartmental regional grants by $50,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Lambs Foundation. This one-time contribution to support their coordination of the Juneteenth Festival to be held in June of 2024. Number 15, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $10,000 to provide a one-time contribution for the Hospice House of Hampton Roads, the first freestanding inpatient hospice facility in Hampton Roads. The house is located in the Red Mill area of the city and will include 12-bedroom suites. Number 16, increase the nondepartmental regional grants by $30,000 to provide additional funding to the Virginia African-American Cultural Center. This one-time increase will bring the city's total contribution to the organization to $80,000 in FY 2023-24. Number 17, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $10,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the Up Center Co-Military Family Clinic. The clinic serves the region's post-9/11 veterans, active-duty service members, and military families with accessibility, cultural, competent, and mental health care. The Co-Military Family Clinic also offers referrals for other challenges such as unemployment, financial counseling, housing, and... Number 18, increase nondepartmental regional grants by $10,000 to provide a one-time contribution to the New Oak Grove Baptist Church for the organization's summer reading academy. A free three-week proactive reading program for students in grades K through 5 provided in partnership with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Number 19, all funding provided to outside entities through nondepartmental regional grants, including those not listed above, will be required to report to the City Council on the use of funds from the city, including reviewed financials and the impact of the programs supported by city funding by the end of 2023-24. This request will be concluded with a word letter sent to the organizations, and acknowledgement of such terms will be required prior to payment of the grant award. Reporting requirements will be modeled after the requirements set in place by the community organization grant committee, which is COG, and are attached in the letter. In addition, any special events or festivals to be held utilizing city funds must follow city's established procedures and processes for special event permitting. must follow city's established procedures and processes for special event permitting. Number 20, increase the departmental FY 2023-24 Operating Budget by $152,960 for increased contribution for Community Organization Grant, COG, program. Between this increase and the amount provided in the proposed budget, the total COG funding will be $707,960. This increased funding will allow the City Council-appointed committee to have two appropriated periods within the fiscal year to provide additional opportunities for local nonprofit organizations. Increase the municipal council's operating budget by $3,000 for a one-time increased allocation of the night series. This will bring the total allocation for this purpose to $6,000 in FY 2023-24. Number 22, increase the Department of Emergency Medical Services operating budget by $75,000 to increase a one-time grant awarded to the volunteer rescue squads for a total of $775,000. This grant is intended to provide support to the various volunteer rescue squads for recruitment and retention activities as well as operational costs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and Mr. Mayor, for number 20, I'd like to add for number 20, increase the departmental fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget by $152,960. I want to indicate that that's for one time. So we'll have staff amend.
We'll make that adjustment.
You'll make an adjustment. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the importance of reading and going through this.
That was my fault. You left it.
Not a problem at all, Patrick.
Vice Mayor, you're on. You want to number 23?
Number 23, yes. Increase the Department of Cultural Affairs operating budget by $70,000 in one-time funding to provide additional contribution to the Arts and Humanities Commission. The total amount provided for this grant opportunities will be $765,000 in FY 2023-24. Number 24, increase the Department Parks and Recreation operating budget by, excuse me, ma'am, by $5,000 for a one-time expense for the purpose of offsetting lost revenue for waived space rental fees at Mount Trashmore Park for the annual Phil Fest USA event that celebrates Filipino spirit and cultural, culture within the community. Number 25, increase the Department of Public Works operating budget by $20,000 for establishment of a pilot program to install and maintain two portable bathrooms, one of which is to be ADA compliance, in the parking lot of Fentress Avenue and Oceanfront Avenue. This location is the, is in a heavily visited area and is the only beach parking lot along the western portion of the bayfront. Due to a lack of public restrooms, nearby businesses and homeowners are experiencing a high volume of beachgoers who want access to their restaurant, restroom facilities, excuse me. Number 26, establish a dedicated reserve within the general fund in the amount of $150,000. This funding is expected to be split between economic development and public works for the design, creation, and installation of placemaking signage within historic African-American neighborhoods throughout the city. Number 27, increase the Resort Management Division of the Convention and Visitors Bureau by $100,000 to provide an additional contribution to the Virginia Beach Neptune Festival to support the Boardwalk Weekend during the last weekend of September. This investment will bring the city's annual contribution to the event to a total of $375,000. This level of funding is the same as approved by City Council through mid-year adjustment in FY 2022-23. Number 28, the City Manager is hereby authorized to amend flexible holiday value 24 hours for the Fire Department is presented in City Council in March of 2023 as option 1A. This will reduce the amount of annual leave to have an entire shift off work when utilizing flexible holiday leave. In addition, the amount of sick leave earned monthly by sworn members of the Fire Department shall be modified from 11.2 hours to 12.0. This will provide additional monthly accrual of ease administrative management of sick leave accrual and usage of leave throughout the, throughout the course of the year. The change will result in a higher number of days eligible for sick leave payout upon retirement. Number 29, the Department Parks and Recreation shall develop and present a plan for the City Council's consideration to mitigate and address invasive species vegetation such as bamboo. Bamboo is on the Commonwealth of Virginia's invasive plants list because the plant and its complex horizontal root system aggressively spreads and can be destructive in the natural environment and suppress native plant species. Following the City Manager's proposed budget, several other items are recommended to be amended during the reconciliation to better align some resources with the community need and to amend departmental revenue estimates based on additional information provided by the state and federal governments. These changes are within Human Resources, the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, and the MDC schools. Number 30, in order to improve efficiencies and ensure critical services are being provided by the Department of Human Services Development Services Division, it is recommended that 10 part-time positions be converted to five full-time. This change will have no impact on the operational budget, but will improve service delivery within the department. Many of the services provided are either mandated or provide services to vulnerable populations that are essential for the health and safety of those served. Recently reported vacancy rate is approximately 26%, which significantly impacts workloads, quality, and the overall ability to provide necessary services. Number 31, the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation has been notified of their award within the Federal Department of Housing, this amount of $434,843 and the amount estimated within the City Manager's proposed budget and will be used for increased contracted manpower and overall programmatic. Number 32, at their March 7th, 2023 meeting, the school board approved an additional $4,017,393 in estimated state revenue to the school operational budget. Due to the timing of this addition, it was not incorporated within the City Manager's proposed operating budget. Though the Commonwealth has not yet adopted a budget for the upcoming fiscal year, this amount is closely in line with the budget as proposed to the House of Delegates. This estimate shall be approved by the City Council, and once the Commonwealth adopts a budget, an additional changes to state revenue may be necessary. It is further recommended that FY 2023-24, FY 2028-29 Capital Improvement Program be adopted as presented by the City Manager with the following modifications. Number 33, at the March 21st, 2023 City Council meeting, the initial phase in of Sheriff's Office Body-Worn Cameras was authorized in order to provide cameras to an additional 280 sheriff deputies, It is recommended to be included with Project 1000656, Sheriff's Office Body-Worn Cameras. It is a one-year of the CIP. The funding source for this increase, the fund balance is with the general fund. This will allow the increased safety, accountability, and transparency with the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Department. Number 34, provide an additional $380,000 of general fund, pay-as-you-go funding to Project 10632 Parks Infrastructure and Underdeveloped Parks in year one for enforcements, excuse me, enhancements at Oak Springs Park and Pine Meadows Park, as well as for pickleball courts located within Birchwood and Malibu Park. Number 35, establish capital improvement project 10665, employ engagement tool within the informational technology section of the CIP, and increase year one funding by $75,000, supported by pay-as-you-go funding from the general fund. This project will improve employee communications and enhance employee engagements within the organization. Number 36, the City Manager is hereby directed to conduct an updated Shore Drive Corridor Plan. The plan has not been updated since 2000 and will provide community input on the future redevelopment of the corridor funding. Funding for this initiative will be through the existing appropriations with the projects 10399 Shore Drive Development, Strategic Development Projects. Number 37, in order to progress the Atlantic Park Development Project, a total of $14,078,900 is, funding is being redirected within the Economic and Tourism Development Section of the CIP and authorized for use in Phase One of the project. Authorized for use and transfer in Phase One is $1,500,000 from Project 10148 Atlantic Park Streetskates to Project 10606 Atlantic Park Offsite Infrastructure. The remaining $12,578,900 million being redirected in year one of the CIP from Project 10629 Sports Tourism Facilities and Infrastructure to Project 10146 Atlantic Park Entertainment. The amount of $6,360,614 will be to Project 10606 Atlantic Park Offsite Infrastructure to the amount of $6,218,286. A portion of the funding redirected to Project 10606 Atlantic Park Offsite Infrastructure is in an effort to avoid unnecessary redesign of certain project components related to utilities. However, should design become necessary, redesign should become necessary, and this portion of the transfer not be needed, the City Manager is authorized to transfer an amount not to exceed $3,900,000 from Project 10606 Atlantic Park Offsite Infrastructure to Project 10147 Atlantic Park Parking or utilize existing fund available within Project 10147 Atlantic Park Parking to address additional parking deck construction needs within 30 days after any such transfer for use of funds. The City Manager will provide a report expressing the intent, reasoning, and amount to be transferred. Number 38, increase funding for 10629's Sports Tourism Facilities and Infrastructure by $12,578,900 in year two of the six-year CIP with public facilities revenue bonds increased accordingly. Sliding funding previously programmed for this project into year two of the CIP will allow additional planning, reevaluation, and public input on project plans. The restoration of these funds in year two, this project remains funded in, at $19,500,000. In order to reflect actual amounts to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth and federal government, $2,100,000 in total funding, $420,000 from the Commonwealth, and $1,680,000 from the federal government shall be redirected from Project 100057 Centerville Turnpike Phase Two. This project remains fully funded at $77.4 million despite this adjustment as the local project cost was previously over. Number 40, at the recommendation of the City Attorney's Office, ten capital improvement projects, detail sheets, project scopes are recommended to be amended within FY 2023-24 CIP. Clarify the public nature of certain improvements contemplated within the projects. This recited public purpose is useful in the event that site acquisition is needed for the projects attached to the detail sheets for each of these projects, along with the amended verbiage highlighted. Additional details about the funding sources and appropriation adjustments are outlined in this letter identified on the attachments. We want to thank the members of the community who participated in public hearings or weighed in on social media or other platforms to offer their comments on the FY 2023-24 Operating Budget and CIP, as well as the staff members who made every effort to respond to our requests for information. If you have any questions or concern, contact us directly. Bobby Dyer, Rosemary Wilson.
Thank you. And I'd just like to point out that with regard to any of the, although the Vice Mayor read about the inclusion of the Atlantic Park thing, she was not a part of the actual discussions. We have, these were the advice and counsel of both of the liaisons, Josh and Worth. Okay, just for a point of clarification on that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on this? Yes, okay. Yeah, Amelia and then Barbara.
Yeah, as just mentioned, it just will work. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you, Barbara.
Always the one that's got to be the party pooper. But this is different from any budget I've ever been a part of, and I can't be a part of this. And I think I've been saying that all year. I know I said it at last year's budget when we had a very similar letter that just added a lot of giveaways. And I said at that time, if we're going to continue this process, I'm just not going to be able to support the next budget. I think you really need to explain to everybody exactly how this was done. It's just not right for the public not to know. If this is a result of our district system, I think the public needs to know that this is, you know, opportunity for every district council member to do something for their district. And you see, there's a big gap in district, too. But they're just, this just isn't the way we do things. When we are doing our responsibility to provide services to the city and we have the ability to tax people, we are taxing people. And in our primary tax sources, it's their homes and their cars. And it's not voluntary. People really have trouble paying their taxes. And therefore, if we're going to be spending that money, it must be for those things that we are required to provide. That's what the government does. It provides things that people cannot do for themselves. And the public, the local government does these things that are specifically our responsibility. I think the world of nonprofit organizations. I am very supportive of nonprofit organizations. But once they become city-funded, they're no longer nonprofit organizations. If you want to give something to a nonprofit organization, it's voluntary with your money and your time, and that's wonderful. That's your choice. But once they become city-funded, it's different. And I know that we, we have the Community Organization Grants Program. We developed that, I think, probably 25 years ago because we didn't feel like it was the thing, the way for us to spend our, our budget time trying to decide if there were things that needed to go to community organizations. And since that time, we've had this community group or this committee that allocates based on applications that organizations met to them, and they allocate the money that we've made available. And it's worked up until the last couple of years. Up until the last couple of years, that's the way it worked. If we're not going to require every organization to do that, we need to stop that program completely. It's not fair to make some organizations go through this competition process if we then are going to just give out money otherwise. And so I would say, let's get rid of the community organization grant program. I noticed that of this listing of things that we had, that people who took this opportunity to say where they felt we ought to cut, that was in the top third, maybe the top fourth of things that people suggested, and that was their suggestion of additional community organization grant funding. But if we're going to do all of these non-departmental community grants, then that's an entirely different way of doing things. And saying it's a one-time thing doesn't mean a thing, because I look at last year's letter, and some of the same ones had a one-time grant last year. Once we do it, it's going to become permanent, and it's just going to grow and grow and grow, and we have not had any opportunity to present this plan to the public and get feedback as to whether or not this is what people want us to do. I know that we, we put in the requirement that they fill out some application, well, we've had that requirement in. I mean, this was the micro grant program, which we are now, in this budget combining with the community organization grant, and it requires all kinds of reporting and so forth, but I don't think it's ever been done. I, I don't, I've just am not comfortable with doing this, and, and I'm going to have to have feedback from the public to see if this is the way the public wants us to operate. So please don't, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I've been saying this for a year, so it's nothing new, and I've just got to, to have some feedback as to whether this is the way the public thinks we ought to be allocating their money. I don't see any attempt whatsoever to reduce any spending and to give tax relief, which is what I had the most emails concerning. We don't even seem to have looked at that, and, and it really concerns me. Now, the, the issues that I had discussed with the council and, and is included in here, of course, the annual looking at the SSD for Sandbridge, and that, that community again this year largely had over 20% assessment increases. This only affects the SSD, the Sandbridge Service District, it is not a part of the general fund, doesn't affect the tax rate, they're still going to be paying 99 cents, but instead of paying an additional two cents on the real estate, they can be down now to just one cent, and it will be in compliance with the program. The other thing that I did support was working with the Flex to Leave or the Fire Department as we had, they had asked us to do early in the process, and, and I also support the surviving spokes of military having the opportunity to have the real estate program. But as far as these giveaways, I don't have $150,000 in that pot.
Okay, and if I, you know, can be, if you can indulge me, I would like to, you know, certainly, you know, Mrs. Henley has been a vital part of our body for a long time, and we respect her comments as we respect anybody else. But I think in regard to, you know, this budget and, you know, last budgets, you know, we were in, you know, un, un, you know, unseen waters for the last couple of years. You know, we were coming out of COVID, we're in the middle of a recep, a recession, and, you know, it demands that, you know, us council come together and address and reflect the challenges that were put upon us. You know, last year, we had an overwhelming, you know, concern, first of all, to get the stormwater referendum passed, which we did, and I believe that there's four cents embedded, you know, within this budget, you know, based on a 72% request from the public than we are, but the other thing is too, last year, we had a priority with, not only with public safety, but with paying our engineers and paying our waste management, and we took it upon ourselves to, you know, put in the step system. And we heard recently in a, a briefing that we had, that, you know, from Human Services, that, you know, the actions that we took have paid off significantly. You know, we made a tough decision, and we took criticism for it, but we were able to think, I think we're down to, you know, our ability to retain and recruit police are better, things are, you know, better, and a lot of folks are making not near where minimum wage, but more of a wage that, you know, reflects what we're doing. And we still got a little ways to go there, but there's something we did with a tough budget. And I also respectfully think this is also another year of unique conditions that we as a body had to react to. You know, during the public hearings on this, we heard overwhelming concern and call for support for our education. You know, just as last year, we had a crisis with public safety and others, this year, the importance and magnitude of funding schools is paramount. You know, once again, if we're not being able to recruit, retain teachers, and school bus drivers, and things of that nature, and we've been hearing for years about the CIP demands for school replacement, we got a lot of schools over 50 years old that we have to, you know, you know, envision in the future. And with respect to us allocating money, I think one of the important things is that we do, when we do a budget, and we do focus on, you know, things like education, hiring EMS, getting the necessary body cameras for people, and also people to review it, you know, the cost of the government is, you know, going up, and we were not immune from inflation. When we think about the thousands of vehicles it takes to run a city of this magnitude, what a couple-dollar-a-gallon gas thing will do, and, you know, what, what inflation has done to our CIP budget and things of that nature. But, but, you know, particular regard, that one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we help the people in the public that need helping, and government cannot do this by ourself, my colleagues. So by, you know, empowering and helping finance organizations like NAMI and, you know, the Cohen Sec, and a lot of folks, you know, with the autism groups and everything, we are actually providing a service of help, because the people in the neighborhoods know their neighborhood better than anyone. And in regard to having a district, a district system, each council person knows their district intimately and the needs that are there, and are having some discretion about how the money should get to the right people. Is this a new way of doing things? Yes. And by the same token, that times and challenges dictate innovation and different ways of doing things. And the thing is, this was a tough budget, last year was a tough budget, and the, the hope is in the future that as we go, when I was talking to Worth Remick, you know, as we go forward and with our economic development initiatives in the future, which are on the drawing board, and we create those new revenue streams, that will in fact reduce the burden on residential property. And the thing is, we had a, you know, if I recall, a meeting briefing recently where, you know, after the COVID, we came back, and there was a $2.1 billion, you know, you know, revenues came into the resort area, and that resulted in that, what was it, $1,700 savings on taxes? But the thing is, you know, it's tough, but it could be worse, and I think what we did was going to be proven over time to be the responsible budget needed for the time, and there are many people, individuals throughout the city that require help, and I think by funding the agencies that are intimate and have, you know, working relationships with folks, you know, we are in fact serving our folks. Yeah, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and Barbara, thank you for your leadership as it relates to your, your comments. When I ran for city council last fall, I told people over and over, I'm doing this because I want to help the people in our city in every way that's needed. I meant that then, and I mean that now. I said a few weeks ago, we have choices to make. I flashed back to our retreat, and we agreed that we were going to establish a strong foundation for effective governance, and we have five new members. We said we're going to listen with respect, we would be attentive, we would disagree agreeably, that we would be bold. This budget is bold, I just don't know if it's bold in the right direction. We said we'd be positive and realistic, candid and honest, patient and self-aware, engaged and fully present, that we would hear from others, especially the new members, we would practice transparency, honesty, and be attentive to the citizens' needs, that we would provide a sense of clear direction, laying out the priorities for staff so they would know how to navigate with some clarity. We agreed that we would lean into strengths of individuals, blend personal and professional, and disagreement wasn't personal. In Vice Mayor Wilson's opening reading of the reconciliation letter, I do agree that staff has worked diligently. We don't want to discount the effort and the time put into this. And it says as a collective body to finalize this budget that meets the needs of the community, and that's, there, there's some question marks there, which community? As a new member, a freshman, I, I don't know if my input was valued, respected, but we had a, we had a meeting on the 11th, and we asked for additional options, not mental health, not the body cams, but to see from the city manager, Mr. Manager, some other options, and we gave direction. And that's been really challenging for me as an individual, is I'm not sure if the body's giving direction or if it's members of the body. I spoke with four members, we never got those additional options. Spoke with Councilmember Lucci, who really encouraged me to provide solutions and not just banter, and I thank you for that, Michael. I spoke with Mrs. Henley, Mrs. Wooten, and we were expecting to see those options, and we didn't, and maybe that's because it was already determined that there was support for the presented budget. We talk about, I heard, I heard you, Mr. Dyer, Mayor, talk about the public input in overwhelmingly hearing on the, on that night session I was traveling, I did get to hear, and the teacher showed up, and I spoke with Barbara Beasley, one of my classmates at FC, and explained to her why I'm in Mrs. Henley's shoes, where I can't, I don't know if I can support this. What we didn't mention though were Buddy Hall, who emailed us on 3/19 about lowering taxes. We didn't mention Patricia Hendricks, Anita Tonelson, we didn't mention George Kellis, Richard Dudley, and I made sure these names I'm reading come from all the districts, it's not just District Eight. Nylea Laney, Bill Boxsmith, Robert Clendannon, Ben Speakhart, Kim Beck, Jennifer Fanger, and just today, Fran Sansone. They may not have shown up to the convention center, but we had over 50 emails from individuals that expressed, because we talked about meeting the needs of the community, a desire for lowering the taxes. And I don't think as a new member that there were more than one conversation where we dug in. And so Michael asked me, what is the solution, and that's up to this body. Mayor Dyer, you talked about economic development being an engine to reduce taxes. Yet again, it, we had an opportunity to hear from Capstone, Norm Jenkins, a significant economic development opportunity, and we decided that it wasn't the time. Yet last week, we heard from Project Wayne, economic development opportunity. I have a memo here from April 21st about the tax reduction simulation, and my question is, when did the tool go live? I know, Kevin, this memo came from you and the city manager, but I wasn't, we had so much going on, I don't know if the citizens knew they could go online and play with a tool that would show them how we could potentially get to a tax reduction. So again, I, I credit Michael Berucci, Councilmember Lucci, for pushing me to provide solutions. So next year, maybe we can release that tool January 2nd, so people can have an opportunity to slide the scale and, and see what they may be willing to give up. But, you know, 60 submissions in a matter of, you know, 13 days, I don't know if that's really effective public input as it relates to Atlantic Park. That's a challenging, that's a challenging piece for me, because I'm not sure the public understands that this is another $19.5 million in tax money. I hear about stakeholders. The largest stakeholder group in this city is the people, not special interest, the people. We've done this negotiation, these discussions enclosed. I'm not sure if the public has had a opportunity to give input if they want the city to invest $19.5 million, whether it's over the first year, the second year, into a surf park, which could revolutionize and change the footprint of our oceanfront, it could enhance our visitors' experience, but I can't say with confidence that we gave the public a transparent, fair, candid, and honest opportunity to weigh in on these monies. As it relates to the $75,000 offer for our districts, I'll take the credit. I, I pushed back with Vice Mayor and said, you know, what's 75,000 if, if we're gonna not provide any relief to citizens? If we're not gonna dig deep and try to find some type of relief, then why not 150? I can't build a pickleball court for 75. That's what residents in District Eight want, and so I want to open it up. I don't know the solution, but as a freshman, I can't say that this process to get to where we are today was inclusive. It wasn't exclusive. We were involved, but I feel like the budget that I received, the first meeting, was 95% done. It was, it was already baked, just had to add the cheese. Can't say that we took the time to hear on ways we could relieve pressure for individuals striving to make ends meet. I have two kids, one on the way, small business owner, three stores in this city, none in the resort area. I'm not feeling the $1,700 coming from the resort area. What I am feeling is the taxes, the increase in wages, the need to put food on the table. I'm not getting relief, but I guess I could go to the oceanfront and enjoy some enhancements. I don't know what the answer is, but I can't say this is the best avenue to providing a budget of $2 billion. No relief, not an opportunity, not a scratch. Choices are what we have to make, and I, and I'm thankful for all of my colleagues that we can communicate, that we can disagree. But again, as a freshman member of this body, waiting until March or April to get, to get a glimpse into our opportunity and, and our options, I don't know if that's enough time to add value as a councilman to a $2 billion budget. So respectfully, at this time, I'm in a tough place. I support teachers, I support our hard-working public safety individuals, I'm truly grateful that this past week, with the tornado that hit District Eight, that there was no loss of life, that these men and women stepped up, were brave, are working overtime, hungry, tired. How do I express to them that I can't support raises, or budget, or fire equipment? Or to the bus driver that I met at WAWA today that said, Councilman Taylor, I've been driving for 20 years. I have a kid in college. Five or 6% raise is not going to do anything, but you cutting my taxes, my rate on the house that has gone from 180,000 to 450,000 would sure help me out. Make your vote, I support you, I know you support us. And so, we're in a tough position. We were all elected to make hard decisions. And so, I don't want to be negative, cynical. But this has been a challenging first budget. So I just thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. And I'll be respectful to listen to yours. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chris. Hey, anybody else? Sabrina?
So I'd like to say thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for being transparent and sharing your perspective as a freshman. I remember sitting in that seat. And still today, I have questions about transparency, process, procedure, policy for the budget. This is not something that I haven't stated before. But it is good to see that that perspective is, is real. It's, it's real. This is not, you know, in my comments, it's certainly no disrespect to those who worked and led the budget process, it's not. Because I want to get along and work with everyone. We, we are a body, we are a council. And all of our perspectives and feedback, everyone should be respectful, listen. Whether we agree or not, that's usually not the case, we don't agree on everything. However, this important part of what we do is pass the budget. And we as a body, we are, along with the residents, we're architects of the budget. That means we work together and we build. Those things that are in the budget that should not, you know, be there, we take out. We add to it. And we listen to the feedback from the city manager and from the staff. And as he mentioned many times, his budget plan is just that, it's his plan. It's the city manager's plan, but as a body, we work together and we build it. And I think there's room for improvement. I think there is more building we can do, especially in terms of tax relief. And I mentioned it before, real estate tax relief is what I heard from citizens as well. It's what I receive calls on as well. People want tax relief. And so, when we say to them, we can find money in the budget for all other things and not what they're asking for, it, it does not seem that their feedback is, is being received. We hear it, and you can hear something, but do, what, it's what you do with the information. And so, I can only tell you what I have received and the feedback I've received as well. In terms of some of the items in the budget, you know, I said at the very beginning, told the city manager and others, I, I didn't support the budget. I didn't support the process. And I, and that has not changed to date. I think we can go back and we can find some tax relief for the citizens. In terms of Atlantic Park, I agree. In terms of transparency, we need to see if the citizens, what their feedback is on, in putting this into this reconciliation process. And we have to really make sure we understand what they want in terms of, because that's, that's a huge undertaking. Millions and millions of dollars. And not to mention the optics. It's always the optics. It sounds good, I understand. And I know that's what the city wants. Some folks in the city want, I know there's enthusiasm for it. I remember folks coming out and talking about it, I, I do remember that. But it's about how you get to that process. How do you, you know, come to the realization that those millions of dollars will be added in the process the way it's been done? And so, you know, why, again, I certainly appreciate those who led the budget process, you know, worked hard, you know, in terms of working with, and trying to come to a negotiation. And that's, it is about negotiation, collaboration. It's, it's all those things. I said that I wouldn't make it about the Rec Center for District Seven. But, you know, District Seven, $150,000. That's not going to give District Seven residents what they need either. I mean, there, there's certainly priorities in District Seven that 150,000 won't cover. And so, those are my thoughts. Certainly, we can work together to find other ways to address, you know, tax relief and the feedback from the citizens that I, we are all hearing collectively. And I'm happy to work through that process.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Work.
Thank you, members of council, and especially the staff. City Manager Dehaney, Kevin Schella, the Budget Director. I'll have more of a detailed statement next week when we, or next time we vote on the budget. But in regards to Atlantic Park, and this is my first reconciliation in budget as well, so I'm, I'm new at this. And yes, the public should be engaged, but in terms of this reconciliation, this process evolved to where it is today, starting last August a year ago. And this, this is a venture, a joint venture really, between the City of Virginia Beach and the developer. So for a number of months and times, this body was approached to look at these, what are called adults, or also called project enhancements. So we were finally down at this point in regards to the budget. The numbers that are talked about in this reconciliation number are numbers that are already allocated in certain CIPs. Could be streetscape, could be parking, could be sports, sports use, it's different buckets. It's this year and a little bit of a next year and the second project. So it's not necessarily new money, comes out of the tip fund, not the general fund. I think it's going to enhance this project greatly. I think each one of you have heard from us, liaison with, share with Councilman Schulman. So I, I'm here to answer any questions with the public or with you all in regards to Atlantic Park.
Yeah, thank you. And if I could just make, you know, one point on this, you know, in terms of, you know, transparency and public input. You know, one thing is when we first conceived the notion of an Atlantic Park, Venture Realty went out and I did believe 32 public engagements where they met with the major stakeholders out there. And, you know, brought forward the concept to go forward. And, and then unfortunately, and, and once again, not making excuses, but citing reality, you know, the challenges that we've had with the COVID, with inflation and everything, changing the numbers and everything. It was a very unsteady playing field for a long time. But the, the thing is that, you know, the civic engagement period, I believe, was, if not mistaken, around two years of full-blown civic engagement on this. And now all of a sudden, we're at the finish line. And, you know, it, trust me, it was a frustrating process for the previous body as it is from this body. But the thing is, you know, if we're going to send, you know, we, we want to get this, you know, project completed. And hopefully then do a, an analysis of what the impediments and the barriers to success were. And then work on it, you know, in future projects, that would be a little bit more, you know, in line of what our current body likes. All right, Rosemary?
If I could please ask for the manager or the city attorney to comment on where we go from here, because I, I know everybody would like to have more time. The problem is state law and, and producing a budget for the schools. We really don't have much more time. And we've got, the, the budget's got to go to print, it's got to be available for the public. That's why, especially in the last week, you know, I've really worked so hard to get together with everybody to, to get your feedback and to try to pull everybody's together, which can be a challenge. But if you could comment on the, the state law and why it's so important that we have to move on from, from today and, and the process of where we go from today. And there's been some questions about the $150,000. If you would comment too on, that was kind of unrealized interest income that, that came in, that we were able to. But if, if there was something in somebody's district that they felt really passionate about that could be available, because this has been, this is a budget, we have cut three projects, three road projects out of Josh's district. You know, we cut the, sort of a rec, there's been nine projects cut out. This was really a much tougher budget. And sometimes when it's tougher like that, it's, it's a little bit harder to decide upon. So if you wouldn't mind commenting?
Vice Mayor, members of council? Mayor Dyer. Mark will probably clean up after I complete this first part. But basically, council has to pass a budget by May 15th, because the schools have to have a budget by May 15th. Your next scheduled meeting is May 9th, right? So that is why council is taking the vote up on May 9th, which is next Tuesday. And prior to that, you have obligations of posting for the public, the ordinances that will be adopted probably on Thursday. They have to be posted on Thursday before you all take it up. So that's the time crunch that council is faced with, with the statutory requirement of having a budget adopted by May 15th. Mark, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, that's right, it's the school deadline that drives that May 15 date.
And as it relates to the, the $150,000, that was a, that was due to the fact that we had additional revenue from interest income associated with all the increases from, for example, the Federal Reserve have been increasing interest rates. That has turned for, we started to observe around late March, our timeline, that we're starting to exceed the revenue for interest income. And having that additional interest income made the opportunity available for council, if they desire to take advantage of, doing additional things that they saw that could enhance the quality of life in the districts and in the city overall.
That wasn't really enough.
Correct.
And it's also one-time money, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Wilson, and the, the members who've spoken so far. Yeah, I am also a freshman, as you know, and it is quite something to walk into a process that ends up in a two and a half billion dollar budget. It's an awesome responsibility, especially considering many emails that we've received and the many constituents that come and talk to us at the community meetings and telephone calls. I'd like to relay my own experience with budget, being a first-timer. And, you know, understanding and appreciating, as you said, Councilmember Taylor, the budget process, I think, really starts sometime in, what, September? With department heads meeting with the city manager and then culminates into the five-year forecast where we have an idea of where revenues might be. And then assessments come out. And then in between all of that, this year or this past year, we had an election. So you had five new members come in in the middle of that process. Obviously, I had a pretty packed calendar, as far as I recall, between January and March, when we ended up getting the, the proposed budget. Since then, I've got to give our staff and our manager and our budget director an incredible amount of acknowledgement, thanks, praise. Because this hasn't necessarily been a mystery. This has been opportunity after opportunity to ask questions. I mean, every week, we get a list of council member questions, and I've got a running pile now, they're about this high. And that is all staff time. And that is all, those, those questions are reflective of our own personal concerns, our constituents' concerns, and, and just, you know, just trying to kind of understand the process. And I found it to be incredibly helpful. I was obviously, you know, we all had our, probably our share of disappointments. The three road projects in my district were certainly a, a cause for disappointment. But I, but I'm, but I'm also encouraged in many ways, because at least in those, in, in that particular instance, our, our residents in District Nine, and you've seen many of the emails, have expressed their concerns about, about one of those projects in particular, being Shore Drive. And I, and I think that that brought to light a lot of, a lot of concerns from my district with respect to that, that road project and, and the Bayfront in general. And, and I think that those were, those were good ways to kick off that kind of a conversation. And knowing that I'm going to be on the council for as, as long as I'm here, but, you know, for the next three and a half years, that, those are things that I know we as a body will work toward, including a lot of the things in the budget that weren't funded in your district. For me, this budget boiled down to the question of, of, of real estate tax relief in particular, boiled down to our schools and, and our public safety personnel, including the 40 EMS personnel that we're going to bring on board, because our, you know, our time to respond to call for services was, was lacking and has been lacking compared to other sister localities of our size. You know, and, and most people don't understand, and, you know, most people don't know, and I certainly didn't fully appreciate until I came on the council that we, we don't really have that much margin. One penny, one penny reduction in the real estate tax on a $250,000 home, one penny reduction equals to a $25 annual savings for residents. $25 for one penny. So when you weigh that against the many needs that we have with teachers who are deserving of pay increases, I thought the schools gave us a very compelling budget in terms of investing in facilities upgrades over the coming decades. And we've heard from our, like I said, our public safety personnel, that our firefighters need somebody riding along with them in the, in the, in the fire truck to, to help make sure that the, that the battalion chief knows, knows where they're going and, and to, to plan for upon arrival, instead of trying to do that while they're driving and potentially, you know, getting into an accident, I know that's happened. And, and every penny of real estate tax, there's 46.75% of that that goes to schools. So if we're talking about a rate reduction, we're also impacting our schools. And we're, we're asking, we're asking the schools to go back and, and, and not be as aggressive in terms of the, going after the pay compression issues and, and, and trying to retain teachers. We do really well with teachers in, in the beginning, at the start of their careers, but by, by the time you move into years five through 15, we're having trouble retaining teachers. And in a, in a, in an industry where we don't have a lot of people going into teaching to begin with, and where we're already lagging behind our, our neighboring localities, that gave me great concern. And lastly, I guess as far as Atlantic Park is concerned, I was privileged to serve as a co- liaison to that project with Councilmember Remick. It was a lot to walk into after six years. But the, some of the highlights that I really want the public to understand from this, from this project is the monies that the, the city has allocated for this project are, go to build public facilities. They go to build a, a state-of-the-art entertainment venue that will be the pride and joy of our resort district. And that will entertain residents and attract visitors. And we want people to be wowed when they come to that venue, that they go back to wherever they live and tell a friend and bring them back to Virginia Beach. and tell a friend and bring them back to Virginia Beach. We had some choices about undergrounding utilities. I think that is in the long-term strategic interests of our city to, when we engage in large construction projects, to try and take utilities underground wherever we can, from our resilient standpoint. And just from the sheer fact that we don't want to build this thing and then decide later that we want to tear up what we just built in order to bury the lies because it wouldn't look right. All the CIPs that, all the projects that were in play in terms of trying to find a way to make this work without any general fund impacts, so none of the money, and it's not 1905, it's 17 and change. But those are coming from monies that were already allocated for either Atlantic Park-related projects or sports tourism infrastructure project that we weren't even, we weren't anywhere close to spending anything on. And to have that, to have that money just sitting there doing nothing for us while we could finish up a class double A project in the way that we've disclosed and marketed it to the public, I think is tremendously important in showing that we can get something big and iconic done that we can be proud of and that our residents will enjoy and will put and help keep Virginia Beach on the map as a tourist destination. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved in the budget process. I look forward to next year, believe it or not. And.
Yeah, as Catholics call it, penance.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it. And I just think it's important for the public to know that these are, these are not easy choices for any of us. And especially when you have hundreds of emails coming in from lots of different people with competing requests. So we certainly try our best.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Barbara.
I would have liked to have known before yesterday that we all had $150,000 for each of us. There was going to be this additional money that was one-time, that was going to be available, to be spent in the budget. It really should have been told to the public before we had a public hearing last week. There's just no, we talk about transparency, but that's really what's lacking. And I would have liked to have known when I had my district forum last week, hey, folks, if we had $150,000 to spend in the district, where should we spend it? I just hope we don't go through processes like this. We don't need to do it this way. It's not the right way to do it. And I don't know what the right, well, I don't know. Obviously, we've got a lot of differences and we just unfortunately haven't had a chance to talk things through very much. It's awfully hard when you're just talking with one or two people at different times and so forth. But, you know, we do have a major change in our system of government and how it's going to materialize. Who knows? But at any rate, I just, I just feel that we, these things just have not been out there and discussed with the public.
At this point, if I could, you know, just say something, you know, in closing. First of all, let me say how much I appreciate the demeanor of the conversation that everybody had, you know, in terms of getting their input in. And, you know, there is a fact that, you know, we're playing in many ways with the cards that have been dealt to us. You know, with, you know, somewhat limited options. And, you know, we're in many ways over the last couple of years in uncharted waters where we have never been before. And this is also is exacerbated because we have a new system now where we have people, you know, in the districts and things. So we're kind of feeling our way along. But I am personally delighted by some of the bonds that I see being built, you know, among you all in terms of going. And while we strive for consensus with a budget, it's often non-attainable for a lot of reasons. But the thing is, in budgets and any type of negotiation, sometimes you'll win, sometimes you'll lose a few things. But if other things, if the intent is to do the right thing, you know, kind of like we did last year and then hope that, you know, the results of the fruit that we're bearing, you know, are going to wind up to be a wholly positive thing. But, you know, in line of the fact that, you know, we had a saying, you know, Rocky in the Marine Corps improvised adapt and overcome when you're confronted with a situation that you may not have anticipated or expect or that things. And that's, once again, we're playing with the cards. We're giving, you know, we're giving definite timelines on what to do. But I think, you know, once again, you know, given the new dynamics of the voting system and the complexity out there, I don't, I'm not at all averse to, after the budget process, sitting down and find out if we can build a better mousetrap. I know staff starts it basically around September, you know, with the budget. But, you know, maybe that is the time, you know, for, you know, opportunities for public input and everything. But once again, I thank everybody for, you know, it's a process that's not, how should I put it? It's challenging for us, but once again, as long as we're determined to do the right thing for the right reason and, you know, improve the process, you know, let's make that happen. Okay, thank, okay. Right, at this point, any city council liaison reports? Jen! Hey, what happened? A couple of things over the weekend, people had trouble parking.
Yeah. Dr. Ross Hammond and I were at the oceanfront for the kickoff and the return of the Hometown Festival, something in the water. And I just, it was an incredible weekend. A highlight for me was, you know, you got there and once you were in there, it was great. But there was something quite magical about, you know, being in a space, a footprint and the length of the boardwalk singing along to SWV, Lil Wayne, just vibing out. And it was a fun time and it was a really cool time. And I want to commend our city staff, CBB, Economic Development, Public Safety, Public Works, who had to pivot unexpectedly Sunday. I want to thank our city manager. I know that there were some really hard decisions about what to do about the festival Sunday because the weather looked really nice and I know people were itching to get back out there. But, you know, folks in back rooms were watching weather patterns and were trying to make a call. And it was a very difficult call, but I thank you for putting safety first. And that ultimately ended up being a very responsible decision. So kudos to the team for pivoting. And I know Mr. Williams has already indicated his interest to return and his willingness to change the date so we don't have another rain, poor weather situation. So as liaison, I would love to see that conversation move forward and hopefully have more time to get to the festival to plan for next year.
And there was something about the term April showers.
There's facts to it, apparently.
Okay, Amelia.
Well, I'll piggyback along with, because it went on before that. Remember, there was Community Day, there was the event at the Norfolk, and we both attended each part. I did get my sketches and it worked. I must say, for the crowd that came at that ending, how orderly they left. I was there till 12:30 going to one and got home after. They took good care of us. And even though they were crushed near us, there was no pushing, like the, and once he said his goodbyes and said, welcome, and he congratulated the city, people left orderly. But other things was going, for example, that Saturday, even though we had things all in place at the back, were people working because they had put roads, remember where we went along, and the sand and the tide. So we were out there enjoying it where, as Deputy Supervisor like Mills Sinclair, I wanted to mention his name, they were out there working behind the scenes. So the people visiting had no clue, half of those, what were they called?
Roads, it was basically like the portable built-out road.
The sandberms?
It wasn't the berms.
Berms, it was actual steel like that so they could go back and forth. Steel plate built a road. And with the tide, it began to wash out and they were back there till late, working on that. We even had one little person during Summer Walkers event that she says, oh, I think someone passed out. Taylor and the group, including Nancy, they went back there to make sure people were safe. Overall, I was there Sunday for the beginning up to 12:00 and they kept texting us. So overall, it was well-planned and it took a lot of hands moving. Mentioned Bill Kelly, Robbie Wells, and so many, Nancy, Brandy, we can go down the list. But they took good care of us. We've got to do this again, Jen, but that was good. And then the crowning thing was my little surprise that the NDA, so you saw that? Got the little, don't look at me, but my little newspaper where they had, looking at something for the community where we're building this cultural center, the community like ever said, please don't move our basketball hoops. And we promised. So when they were looking for community ideas, I said, well, it looks a little raggedy, but what about this? Adidas First Step, and the NBA are going to do that. And they said, Sam, because this is important, showing that. Last time when he came and people began to talk, they mentioned, everything's at the oceanfront. What about the rest of the community? And this, as you know, is in that section in Norfolk Park. We have about six, seven, eight historic communities along there who never get a chance because they just don't have the wherewithal to get down there. Now something right and pride will be there. So, and it continued to do other pop-up things in the community even after he's gone. So that he listened or his group listened and tried to reach out into the rest of the community. You know, it's impressive, we want to thank him for coming. And he actually apologizing his own way, saying things that happened, that's the crimes you remember. But we can get back together and move forward. So that's what this is all about.
Thank you. Worth and Sabrina.
So, living in the middle of the festival is a whole lot different than those of you that can come and go home. So, living there is quite a different experience. But I do want to comment that, on several, there's three residential buildings that overlook, that are right there in the footprint of the festival. And these are people, I mean, they live there and they have to listen to the music till late hours and have the problems of getting in and out and all of that. But I will tell you that the mayor and members of the festival went and met with each building to work things out with them, to help the best they could to make it a more pleasant situation. Because it really isn't convenient to have to, especially getting in and out. And there was a lot of work that was put in. And I really, really appreciate your work in that and then also the members of the festival. But also, our folks dealing with traffic, they were polite, they did their jobs, they, most of the time had a smile on their face. You know? And, you know, it was, it was pretty tricky at times because things would change. Like, one day I could come home one way, another day I couldn't come home that way. It was, it was fluid. But our folks were really amazing and I'm always proud of our city. But this particular weekend, never more proud. And I think we've really also got to talk about what happened Sunday night. And Bobby said it was a miracle and we did. We had a good Friday miracle with the jet, but we had a good April 30th miracle with this tornado. I mean, buildings can be replaced, but people can't. And as far as we know, there were no injuries. And you look at the devastation, it really truly was a miracle. But also what was a miracle was our EOC was set up, the people were in place, people from the state were here to chip in and they were there in an instant. I mean, a response of 10 minutes was absolutely incredible to be there for the impact of communities. And I don't know if you've been there, but I did go through there yesterday. And I went into one of those homes that was, what was left of it. What was absolutely, it was just incredible. And people, they still have, you know, a good attitude and they're going to keep things going. And we had people down there everywhere and tremendous support. Again, we have the best employees in the world that work for us. And we have great leadership with you, Manager DeHany. So we're going to get through it. I think we still need to keep everybody in our prayers and still hope that no more, no injuries pop up. But we will call this, we need a name for it, but the April 30th miracle for now.
Okay, Worth and Sabrina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dee one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to just highlight the same thing. There's something in Virginia Beach, there's something in our staff, there's something in our council, something in our leadership. And I want to thank the prior council for helping to bring this festival back here. It wasn't necessarily me or folks at this table, great foresight, Councilman Taylor, I mean, excuse, Ralphson, in Linwood Branch. So that being said, Friday I went down, Saturday I went down and then saw, and then last week, staff took us through the footprint, incredible amount of infrastructure and time and money on all sides. Our partner, Pharrell Williams, as well as our staff, our city, committed incredible resources and time and design and talent to create this venue, this footprint for this project, which is in its second tour this time. So I tell everybody, this is only our second time. And so I'm looking forward to the next time because it's really starting to evolve. So I really, staff, when I saw them Saturday, they were tired and I was not down there Sunday and then evolving into the F3 Sunday night. And there's something in Virginia Beach and there's something in our staff and I really thank you.
Yeah, and thank you. And my conversation with Pharrell, I had about that, you know, this could and should be a legacy of that. Okay, Sabrina?
Thank you. Just want to also express my gratitude to the staff and public safety members. Because as was mentioned, taking the tour behind the scenes, because that's where all the magic happens, the hard work and the dedication of the staff building, putting all of that infrastructure together and to be able to ride along and to see all that happen. I can't tell you how exciting it was, but I just wanted to say to the staff, you are the magic that was in that festival. Your hard work, your dedication, your ideas, your blood, sweat and tears that you put in. Thank you. And then to continue relentlessly working throughout the crisis that happened with the tornado, just hats off to all that you do. I really do appreciate you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Dee one.
A couple proclamations we're going to hear tonight. And one is, May is Bike Month. So we'll see a lot of folks out biking. If you live in District One, you've certainly seen me out on my bike. In full disclosure, it is an electric bike and a lot of people tell me that doesn't count, but I do get a little, and somebody sitting next to me says that.
Rocky, it doesn't count.
That's right. So let's make sure we get out on, get out on the bikes and enjoy our city. The next proclamation we're going to hear about is Mental Health Awareness Month. And I can tell you, for the past 10 years as a deputy sheriff, the men and women of the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office have been at the tip of the spear on this, making a difference. And this evil, evil, oftentimes unseen, untreated disease leads our society down a road that is just unbelievable. And I see them every day as they come in and dealing with the mental illness that they have. And we immediately try to get them the wraparound services that they need so that we can get them whole and get them back into society. And so I'll say this, if someone is going through a difficult time, you don't have to have all the answers. Just be there for them, be there for them, be that listening ear, be that comforting voice that they can hear. Because I can promise you, this often unseen and untreated disease that is mental illness is very sad. And until you've had it. And until you've had it touch you by a few degrees of separation, you don't understand just how bad it is. So, if you take a minute to just say a kind word to folks, take a minute just to be a shoulder to lean on, I promise you, you make a difference in the community, one by one. Each of us can do that. And I hope that all of our citizens can appeal to their higher angels and really embrace this month of mental health awareness and understand just because you don't see it doesn't mean it's not happening. So, take that moment and be that kind voice and that listening ear. And I think we'll all be a much better community, I can promise you that. And again, I just want to echo what I heard about Something in the Water. What an amazing event with the staff out there doing everything they did and all of our staff. And our city was on full display, and I told somebody yesterday that the festival was small, but it was mighty because we only had a day and a half of it, but it was a good day and a half. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
And thank you. Random acts of kindness is what we need in society today. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Holcomb, I really enjoyed hearing what you just said. I just want to let you know that. And I think some... My mom always taught me is that we're all, each of us, somebody's child. And when we go about it in the community, keeping that in mind, those random acts of kindness really do make a difference. And so, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I also wanted to give my thanks to the many people who contributed to a successful event this weekend and Something in the Water and to the event and CBB staff who were gracious enough to give us a behind-the-scenes look at the city they built on our beach. I mean, it was incredible to the men and women of our Public Works Department, our EMS, our Sheriff's Department, our Police Department, and so many others. It was... I made... And I know everybody here who was down there, we all made a point to say thank you and to show our gratitude and recognizing that they have a difficult job and they do it so very well. So, thank you. And as far as the tornado and those impacted, I know I share everybody else's sentiment here that our thoughts are with the people who have been impacted by the storms. Incredibly grateful to our public safety professionals for, you know, for coming to our citizens' aid so quickly. But I also want to give a shout out to Councilmember Chris Taylor, who I think exhibited just incredible leadership. You know, your first press conference in the natural disaster, you did, I mean, amazing. And thank you to our mayor and everybody else who's exhibited leadership, compassion, and care through this, you know, just unanticipated tragedy that thankfully didn't result in any loss of life or injuries. And finally, on a positive note, I wanted to share with you that I was at the Jewish Community Center this past weekend, and we celebrated, the Jewish Federation Tide Water celebrated Israel Fest on Yom HaAtmaut. And I know that's a big, not English word, but it is Israeli Independence Day because Israel is celebrating 75 years of existence as a country this year. So, there were people, tons of people there. The weather did not cooperate, but they made it work, and it was wonderful. And we had a lot of elected officials from federal, state, and local all there supporting our Jewish community in Hamptons.
Thank you. I just want to make a, you know, quick closing statement before we get to agenda review. In my opinion, I think Virginia Beach defined itself over this past weekend, both in celebration and with tragedy. When you take a look at the celebration about what we were able, and the operative word is "we," how many people were involved between our council, our liaisons, and everybody that it took? You take a look at that infrastructure that was there and what they put in, you know, the amount of work and effort, sweat, equity put into this. There's not that many cities that can pull this off. And when you think about the Shamrock Marathon, 22,000 people, and you think about, you know, 30,000 plus at this one, and everybody was accommodating, what if we loved to put that positivity in the Ottawa and keep it, and make that the DNA of the city of Virginia Beach? You know, that's the can-do spirit that we have, and we have the team in place to do it. And then in terms of, you know, the horrible tornado, once again, we demonstrated who we are as a city, you know, by the response, the rapid response and, you know, and speaking to, you know, a number of the people that were adversely affected, we're definitely, you know, grateful for the rapid response. And yes, Chris, you did a masterful job in interacting with the public and your empathetic comments at the thing. But once again, I'm just going to say, this is how Virginia Beach, this is how we define ourself. You know, when challenged and, you know, when, you know, things come up, we respond. And I want to thank everybody involved. Okay, Rosemary.
Yes. I'd like to remind council, I sent the email yesterday, I gave you an executive briefing on the tornado response. I'm requesting that we walk on to our agenda, one being a confirmation of the emergency declaration that I declared on Sunday. As you all know, and for the new members, the city manager can declare an emergency, but council has to confirm it in order for us to get any benefits or be able to use the flexibility and discretion associated with it. So, I'm asking council to consider that. The next item I'm asking for council to consider is authorization, allowing the city manager to use vacancy savings to help cover some of the tornado recovery efforts that the city is going to use, going to need. So, this is going to... No loss of life, no injuries, but significant property damage to private properties and public infrastructure. The roads are a mess. It's going to take a long time for us to get this back. I don't want to overpromise and say how long that's going to take, but it's not going to be a one-week, a two-week, a three-week, or four-week fix. We're going to use... And we're coming to the end of budget, so as you know, we're coming pretty tight, and some of the departments that are responding are going to need support for overtime. So, I'm asking for flexibility, use vacancy savings within the city to shift it to where it's needed. In addition to that, we're going to need some state support and also some regional mutual aid as well. And when situations like that happen, if they go over overtime, the city compensates them for their additional time to support the city. I keep you all posted through monthly reports that we always do as relates to transfer on how this is progressing, but I really would like council to consider those so we can assist the public with the recovery efforts.
So, these will be add-ons, which we'll have to vote to add them on to the budget. Does anybody have any problem with doing that?
The agenda, not the budget.
Add them on to the agenda.
Yeah.
Sorry, what did I say?
The budget.
Oh, sorry. I've got budget brain. No, we have to add these on to the agenda, and so if any... And then we'll have a separate vote to add them on, and then we can go through the...
And Chris, are you okay with putting yours on for next week?
Sure.
Okay. Amelia?
No, someone says so moved. I was just going to second.
Yeah. So, we have no speakers on... Anybody have any issues with...
I just have a question. The item about the primary elections, transferring funds, I'm not sure that the public understands that the local government pays for the primary elections, and it's going to cost $410,000 for these June elections. And then this is going to leave our general fund reserve for contingencies at zero. I don't know if I've ever seen that before. So, for example, like needing this additional money for the work with the... After the tornado, we've got to go looking for another source, and that's the vacancies. Is that it? Because we would have used our reserve for contingencies now is exhausted, and we've got two more months in this budget.
Yeah, good.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Henley, that would... This will be bringing the general fund budget reserve for contingencies down to zero. Typically, each budget, we include about 1.5, or a council approves 1.5 to start the year. This will obligate that, or we will have transferred, if approved by council, all of that out for the purpose of this. And then that would be likely the source to address tornado damage and storm. The negative impact on departmental operating budgets from that cleanup effort would likely be attrition savings throughout the city.
Okay. All right, so are we okay on the...
No, thank you.
Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237, 11A, Code of Virginia, meant for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion for consideration, acquisition of real property for the public purpose of the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237, 11A, 3, District 5, and personal matters, discussion considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237, 11A1, and that's council appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Okay.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Sorry.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldman.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed into executive session.